They also join either usually there's somebody on by them. There we go.
Sorry, is there not an in-person meeting? I'm just curious.
There is.
Okay.
It's in the community building.
Okay, thank you.
This is this is the audience.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah. All righty. Kathy and John, are we ready?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we're ready.
Okay. Okay, I see you're already but first thing agendas approve the second minutes from last meeting March 1st. Motion to prove the minutes is written. One favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I.
Diana. Hi. Okay, received an email that during. Okay. Received an email from concerning the Duran Cohen Scholarship Fund. So John Cohen's husband is is ending administering the fund and is suggesting or agreeing with with Connie suggesting for the balance that he has to be forwarded to the Mural Fund. Do you hear motion?
I move that the money from the John Cohen Scholarship Fund to the
I second it. All in favor?
Michael, I.
Will Penn, I. So how can we get better sound from Diana? Diana, can you just talk into the?
Is that better?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, just a sec. So I realized I didn't put it in the agenda, but I want to discuss our options as far as how to better set up our hybrid meetings. I would be there today at this point, but I know that it's difficult to set up multiple computers without having feedback. So Kathy, you you brought in a microphone. Do you have any other ideas of what you'd like to see for us? Because I could there are there are options as far as funding.
Well, so what we what we have here is we're displaying your screen on the TV in the community building. And we've got the camera can be aimed at the person that's speaking. It sounds like the audio is not as good and I'm getting feedback.
Right, audio, I mean, that that community building has always been a problem with audio. We've tried, you know, PA systems and stuff norm for normal situations. And this is not normal.
I mean, it's really, it's really nice having people that normally wouldn't be able to attend, attend.
Sure.
But if it's gonna continue to be problematic, maybe maybe just eliminating Zoom meetings altogether might be wise.
Well, if we don't come up with a good solution, you know, maybe that's a last resort, but we definitely have more more attendance, especially when people travel if they want to attend. I mean, there's there's various options as far as focus microphones, there's I know the Franklin and the 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 school district uses an owl. Have any thoughts on L?
Yes.
You like it?
Yes, I think that is the key, but they're very expensive.
Well, they were a thousand dollars, but the community building has about $6,000 balance that with their approval, we can use some of that money.
Can you just ask something to Sullivan or Franklin or whoever you said has one to maybe, you know, use theirs and share the cost?
Well, we can, we can buy one and it's a 30-day, no, no problem return if we don't like it.
The trouble with sharing somebody's is we have to then deal with the logistics of picking it up and dropping it off in between and after every meeting.
Yeah, not dropping it in between.
Right.
Yeah, I wouldn't be in favor of sharing it.
We have a suggestion, we have a suggestion from somebody in the audience. Terry.
Rob, this is Bill Maluski.
Hi.
Hi. It's just a question I'm going to ask. Being the first selectman, don't you think you should be at the town office?
I agree, I agree, and I would have been, but I know all the problems of having multiple computers. And that's why I'm bringing this up.
Get rid of the Zoom meetings.
Well, a lot of people would have.
I spend town money on equipment. Instead, just have town meetings.
I wonder if there's a way where we could do we could do a Zoom option for people other than the selectmen to to zoom in or to see the video.
Well, I mean, no matter what, hybrid means you have more than one computer in the community building and and trying to have good sound and so forth.
Rob, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Well, I just turned it off. And now you can't hear it on the TV. All right, let me just mute everybody. Rob, can you hear me okay?
Yep, you're fine.
All right, so it sounds like what we're dealing with now is we have we have good video, but the audio is not as good because we're running off of my Diana, can you turn your volume off? I think that's where we're getting feedback. Yeah.
Well, volume and microphone.
Right, I muted you, but we're getting feedback. No, it's coming out of your phone. If you could just turn your volume down. All right. Oh, still going. The button's on the side. There, let's try that. Just yeah, no, it's still your volume is still on.
John?
Yeah.
If if you have other people in the same room connected to Zoom, they have to the easiest way is for them to get off Zoom and then reconnect, but do not connect the audio.
Good tip.
Because the audio is still connected even though you mute it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, that's much better.
Can I hear you?
Can you still hear me?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so so what we need is a better microphone so that it's not just the audio from my computer. The video is great because we can just simply turn the camera to whoever wants to speak if they want to be on on camera. And then that way we can kind of capture who's speaking. So I guess if we just get like a standalone microphone.
So what about, where's the sound coming from there?
What was that, Rob?
Where's where are the speakers?
The speakers right now, it's coming off the TV that's hung on the wall.
Okay, that's okay.
That's very good, yes.
Okay.
So I think we're we're on the way to kind of figuring out the hybrid option.
Okay, so if I was there using my computer, I'd be speaking into my computer and you also have a microphone.
You would be speaking into the microphone. Or we would have to mute ourselves individually in order to to speak.
Well, as we found muting doesn't necessarily work perfectly.
All right.
We'll see your mother.
I mean, okay, so as far as we had, well, one, one computer, we can sort of position to get a speaker, you know, capture the image of a speaker. And let me look into a microphone situation where it automatically switches. So there's only one microphone active.
Okay, so we would have so we would have like three or four and a and a podium for somebody from the audience to speak if necessary, or how would that work?
Can I just chime chime in a second that all of a sudden I'm getting a text message from you on my phone about when one computer positioned to get a speaker on speaker, um, so I'm getting a feedback from you guys, sorry.
Trina?
Yeah, this is Trina and I was just all of a sudden I got this weird text message.
Oh.
That was Rob speaking.
Yeah, it was weird. I didn't do it. Okay, so let me look into options for audio that would automatically switch because the owl would do that. And and you know, I think it would be a convenient situation, but let's let's look at the cheaper option first. Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, moving on. Harbor Power, still playing phone tag with person person. Harbor railing, I did get a quote from DC Welding that's.
Hang on, hang on, we go back to Harbor Power, Lou's here.
Oh, great. Okay, I can't see or hear you, Lou.
Okay, we're gonna, I'm swiveling around here, okay, we can see him. And then I wonder if I wish I could figure out how to get the microphone. Lou, can you just come up closer and that way we can all hear it. Just go ahead.
Think we should skip the pole unless we can get it done timely fashion, just get the panel upgraded, get power down there. That pole might last a long time, who knows?
Yeah. Well, the pole is in better shape than the the panel, but.
Might blow down next year. If it falls down, the wires can pull it on short.
Okay, I can't hear you, Joe.
Can hear me now.
I can.
So I don't see any reason why we can't just upgrade the panel now. And if and when it becomes possible to get the pole replaced, we just replace it at that time.
Okay.
I mean, it's, the pole is not cracked and it's not like actively toppling down yet. And if it does, if it does, it's just like every other pole that snaps. Yep. So I I guess I propose that that we just move forward with the the panel replacement and and we'll just continue to to try to get the pole replaced when it's when it's possible.
Okay, John, can you look into trying to get an electrician for that, please?
Sure.
I know it's not going to be easy.
Yeah, they're all pretty busy. Yeah.
Thanks, Lou. Okay.
Yeah, the next one on the agenda is the railing.
I can't, I can't hear you, Lou. Well.
Greg Barry, tight fit welding. Then I had his phone number.
Well, we had a quote for the, I think the best one was 9,800 with Henry installing it. And I think he was charging 1,500 of it. So this is the best quote we've gotten so far, 5,800 from DC Welding. And he does all the high-end work for the boats in Trenton, I'm forgetting the the group.
Ankle.
Yep. So I wouldn't question his quality.
Okay, I stopped for a doc and they said you would call, but they couldn't get that. They tried to call you back, I wasn't able to reach you.
I got a little bit of that.
He said he stopped at Superior Docs and they said that you had reached out to them, but they tried to get ahold of you with no success.
Right. I did, I did see them call me and I couldn't call him back. They're never there when I call them.
So should we, should we get a quote from this Greg Barry? Or are are you thinking that that DC Welding is where they were so much less than the the other welder that they're probably the best price we're going to find?
I'm concerned if we try to get it cheaper, we're going to see it in the quality.
It sounds like this guy works for Superior Docs, so I would, I wouldn't I wouldn't question the quality at all, I've seen some of their work.
Yeah, this guy's pretty busy, I'm hoping he doesn't drop us if we delay, but I don't have any. You know, I told him that we would consider the quote today and let him know so you can put it in his in his queue.
So the, so this quote that you're showing on your agenda, the 5,800, that's a little less than or a little more than half what the other quote was, is what you said?
Like 7,300?
7,300. And this is like, this isn't that much railing, I mean, that even.
Well, it's a lot of work.
I mean, it's a lot of material cost for sure. Do you, I mean, are you opposed to to taking this this Greg Barry's phone number and just reaching out or I mean, we've we've gone this long, what's another two weeks to to possibly get another quote that might be, you know, a thousand bucks cheaper?
Well, I I wish we had that suggestion earlier. But
I mean, if you're if you're opposed, just go ahead and make a motion.
I'm not opposed, I'm just getting concerned, getting late.
All right, well, you're not going to get a motion for from from me to accept this without getting another price, so.
Okay, um, do you have Henry's quotes, right?
I don't think I've seen them.
I mean, DC Welding doesn't deal with email, so it was all by phone. Same images, what do we have for this other person?
I think we have a phone number.
Okay, what is it?
207-460 3777.
4603777 and name is?
Greg Barry.
Okay, um, how about this? Let's say I get in touch with him and he gives us a quote and it's not less than this that we agree to go with this with DC Welding. So that we don't have to wait till the next meeting.
So go ahead and make a motion.
So I make a motion, I move that we accept DC Welding's quote $5,800 for the for the Harbor railings if Greg Barry does not offer a quote that's less.
So what was the timeframe? You you said you weren't sure, but.
The timeframe is
between now.
He would put it into his queue, but you know, I don't, I don't know beyond that.
I guess.
Sooner or later.
It's also very important that this gets done before the installation of the dock.
Right, okay, so but what's our date for that?
Installation of the dock typically is May 1st for the. Beginning of May.
Okay. Okay, so price and and.
Yep. So price being the most important, but if he can deliver way quicker or, you know, guaranteed by by May 1st.
Well, I remember that's not installed, that's delivered.
That's delivered.
Henry being installing it.
Henry will do the installation, okay. Do we have a price for the installation from Henry?
I think he said 1,500, I asked him for 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 that in writing, but he was having trouble with his email, he got hacked or spammed or whatever.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table to accept DC Welding for 5,800 providing that Greg Barry does not have a price less than that or reasonably quicker. I second your motion.
All in favor?
Michael, I.
Will Penn, I. Okay, cyber agreement with MMA, so I I worked on that agreement with Rory Gott. There's no way we can satisfy all their requirements. I forwarded to Kathy and Kathy, I guess you sent it to them?
What did you say?
Did you, did you send the agreement draft to MMA?
No.
No, okay. So they they want it, I mean, we need to sign it individually, but they want a copy of it, correct?
I would assume so.
Okay.
I would do, wait, I would, I would submit it with the renewal.
Right, which I thought was today.
No, no.
When's that due?
The end of the week.
Oh, so last selectman's meeting, yeah, okay. Yeah, so send that to them. And see what they say.
So Kathy's asking if it's been accepted.
What do you mean?
It sounds like there's still I I don't know if I've seen the revisions. So it needs to go to MMA for them to give it their blessing and then we accept it or what's? I guess I'm I'm kind of out of the loop.
Each of us have to sign it, all the users have to sign it.
But we don't have one that that we're sure is is satisfactory at this point?
Right, so we need them to approve it.
Okay, yeah, I won't sign it until they approve it then. So, no, it's not approved.
I liked the one that you wrote. But I'd say that they want a few other things on it, but it's not as good.
Did you hear Diana?
Not really.
She said she she thought the one that you wrote was great, but obviously they need to approve it.
Right. I mean, I had to simplify it some because we can't satisfy their all of their requirements and doesn't make sense to agree to requirements we're not doing.
Yep.
Okay, so 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 Kathy, send that in and and see what they say. So Joey's probably not here, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so next community building boiler water feed, apparently it it shut off again recently.
It shut off again, I was able to top off the the water and it restarted. And I haven't heard back from Flaherty's Mechanical Services about timing for the repair. Doesn't appear as though the repair's been done yet.
No.
So at this point, the the cows may come home before that gets done.
So when you, when you open the valve to manually feed the water, how does it restart?
It just automatically does, there's a, there's a low, low water shut off. So when it gets too low, it just won't restart.
Okay, so Kathy, in situations like that, call my my 422 number. My cell phone was sitting on on a table all weekend, so.
I had the same trouble, I was, I was, I set my my phone down and was working away from it. was working away from it and had no idea there was a problem until it was too late.
Yeah, sorry Kathy, but, um, the home number, you know, it always works. Okay, um, scanning minutes books, um. I don't know if I've gotten any, um, uh, reply from, uh, Gregory from Humane, um, did you Kathy?
No.
Uh, would have been recently. Um. Yeah, as far as the question of who owns the, the digital copy, we, we do. There's not a question of that. Um. But, you know, we, we should be able to get that going and, and schedule with you and they should bring the, the, uh, agreement and the people sign off and so forth. Okay, uh, Sorento EMS. So, um, as far as, uh, Tracy Clement, um, getting reimbursed for, uh, travel for training EMS training, that really brought up a, a bigger question. And, uh, a- and that's, uh, whether or not Sorento, uh, should be establishing its own EMS, uh, reestablishing, but not with, um, uh, with a vehicle. Um, so first, we would have to get approved for, um, uh, EMS and then we'd have people at large that would use their own vehicles to go to, uh, uh, people in need. And I feel it's a, an important, uh, alternative to, uh, Golesboro, uh, since they're certainly not close. Um, Sullivan, um, is less manned and, and less likely to respond than Golesboro, um, and we're pretty, uh, pretty removed as far as from, uh, instant, uh, response to, uh, health emergencies. So I, I, I think the first question is, uh, does the board uh, want to restart EMS with the thought of, um, uh, having, um, EMS people responding, um, directly from their homes?
I know from experience, it's not gonna happen. There's no way. You get one person with an EMS license and that's not even close. The reason it was discontinued is because nobody would do it. Nobody can keep up with the volunteer EMS license. It's, uh, it's not sustainable for a community of our size with six or less members on the fire department. It's just not gonna happen. It would be great if it would, but it's not, it's just not.
As an outside person, not on the select board, can I say that I've been, um, taken to the hospital twice by the Sorento Fire Department? And I'm very, very grateful.
Uh, are you sure you were taken by the Sorento Fire Department? Because Sorento Fire Department has never been a, a transit.
No, they were the, excuse me, they were the EMS and they were the ones that called, um, the, excuse me, fire department came, they treated me and then they called the ambulance who took me to the hospital and I'm forever grateful.
Uh, what was, was the year of this?
Pardon me?
How, how long ago was this?
Uh, this is probably nineteen, no, excuse me, twenty, twenty ten and fourteen.
Um, I think when our EMS was disbanded.
It was twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. Um. I, I mean, certainly thank you for your input and it would be, it would be fantastic if it were possible. I think if it were to be possible, um, we would have to start thinking about combining fire departments with Sullivan and not just automatic mutual aid.
I think that's a great idea, John.
We should, yeah, we should, we should consider either, uh, I, I guess we would have to contract the Sullivan Fire to cover our town or we'd have to start entering a, in, into communications with the town of Sullivan about how to make that happen. But a fire department of our size is never going to survive or provide, uh, adequate coverage to our community.
Can you hear me if I talk?
Uh, Diana, you gotta speak into this.
I've got that.
That doesn't work.
Speak into what?
Into the computer.
Um, I remember, of course, when you had the fire department and, and your vehicle would come and they did a lot of services rental. My memory is that one reason that they, the reason that they disbanded it was that the rule at that time was that if you had, if you I can sit in his lap.
Can, can I, can everybody hear Diana first?
I can hear Diana fine.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. They can hear you.
I, anyway, I thought that my memory is that the reason that they disbanded it was that the new rule that came into effect meant that if, uh, you had the ER emergency services, you had to have someone on duty twenty-four hours a day and that meant that we had to hire these people that, of course, we couldn't.
That's, that's not correct.
That's not, that's how I remember from a meeting.
Yeah, no, that's, that's not correct. The reason, the reason that, uh, that Sorento stopped doing it is because people just weren't able to, to volunteer the hours to maintain their EMS license.
Yeah, the training, yeah.
Yeah, that's, um, and then really the, most of the people with the EMS license didn't even live in the town of Sorento. So they were still responding from Winter Harbor and Golesboro. Um.
Well, they certainly came fast when, at, when it was there and they were all.
I mean, you must be, you must be talking about a time when Dwayne was an EMT, um, because he lived in town. Brian was, wasn't an EMT. Joey at one time was an EMT. He let his license go. Um, it's just, it's, I, they wanted me to get my EMT license and I just didn't have the time to commit to it.
Yeah.
Um, it's not going to, it's not gonna come back to our little fire department. Uh, there's just, unfortunately, there's no way that's gonna happen. So if, if we want to provide EMS coverage, uh, and better protect our community, I think it's very wise for us to, to be talking with the town of Sullivan and the Sullivan Fire Department about how we can merge the fire departments effectively to get the best quality protection for both communities.
Well, I mean, how would that?
John, can I ask a question? Um, so having one of our, um, local fire department people taking the EMS accreditation, your sense is that's not enough? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, first of all, in my sense, uh, since the last meeting, I've found out that this person is now working for an ambulance service that, in my opinion, should be paying for her licensing. Um, so first of all and foremost, the town of Sorento has no business or should not be on the hook for providing a license for somebody that's working for an EMS service. Uh, that EMS service happens to cover the town of Sorento, which then becomes sort of a benefit, but this person does not live in Sorento and is working for this EMS service. So I based.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, John.
Sure.
Which EMS service?
Uh, she's working for Skudic Ambulance Service.
Okay. Do you know when she started?
I don't know specifics.
Is that where you can book them for them?
Uh, she's working shift, I don't know about full time.
Okay, she's working.
Um, yeah, so I think, uh, I think on your agenda item, Sorento EMS was disbanded for a reason and I don't think there's any way that we're gonna be able to bring it back.
So there's, how would, uh, Sorento joining forces with, uh, Sullivan Fire Department help in that respect? Because they would, they would, you know, any people that are, uh, certified EMS on, you know, in Sullivan can respond to, to Sorento anyway.
They can, um, but they don't have the funding that we provide our fire department to help assist them in providing better service for us. So maybe our funding for the fire department could make it so that they could better staff their ambulance or provide better training. Um, there's really a multitude of reasons that that might work better.
What are you saying, our funding?
Uh, the, the budget for our fire department. I mean, if we, if we're, if that money goes towards funding a, a district fire department, um, we get the benefit of a bigger service for less, for the same amount of money.
Their bu- their budget is a lot more than ours.
They also have nearly four times the residents, so it makes sense that it would be.
Well, they, they also have more loans for their equipment.
They don't.
Or, or, I'm not sure. You know how much their budget is?
Uh, not specifically. I know their EMS budget is twice or a little more than twice what our fire department budget is.
Okay.
And that's just for their emergency medical services budget. That's not counting fire suppression or anything like that. I, I mean, the, the benefit of merging fire departments would be, would be huge. Um, there's no fire department anywhere that can operate effectively with six members, th- three of which don't live in Sorento. Hang, hang on just a second.
Can't hear.
Hang on, hang on a sec. Tom Bailey, uh, is. Okay, so let's, let me, let me just clear, let me just clarify something here. Um, this is the only opportunity for selectmen to discuss this item. We have to do it in a public forum and so if we wanna sit here and talk about it till we're blue in the face, now is the time to do it.
I can't hear.
I'll fill you in in a minute.
I mean, I'm just saying and it's a concern for a lot of citizens, uh, Sorento, if they're listed at the emergency health service. And there's the map of John's proposal and I think that it'd be a good idea to do something in writing and perhaps to have discussions with Sullivan for all the staff to discuss the high burden. Now, I think that that high safety is, uh, an issue or concern for a lot of people here, we're getting more retired residents and, um, you know, there's I have a good, a good, a solid issue. A lot of people are, um, the response line is here.
Uh, were you able to hear Tom better? That was Tom Bailey for anybody that didn't know.
No, I couldn't hear.
All right, so what he's, what he's basically saying is he agrees with the concern uh, about response times and with the aging community feels like there may be a benefit with combining fire departments with Sullivan. Uh, he's, he's asking if there's enough merit to add maybe a an article to the warrant for a vote um, or maybe just enter formal conversation with the town of Sullivan and the Sullivan Fire Department. I think at this point, um, we aren't in a position to make a decision on this without the fire chief present. So at the very least, we need to table this until the next meeting.
Sure. Uh, and, and there are also various options of instead of joining, but, uh, to contributing to their EMS.
I think, I think due to the lack of numbers on our roster and actual people living in the town of Sorento, I think, uh, I think the direction we really need to be heading is, is merging fire departments or contracting to Sullivan exclusively. Uh, the Sorento Fire Department right now has six members and three of them live in Sorento, I think. Uh, it's not, that's not a fire department.
Yeah, to be continued. Okay, Kathy, you have some other things?
I'm gonna put my volume on.
Uh, yeah, hang on, let me just. All right, she's gonna, she's gonna turn her, her microphone on.
I'm gonna try.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Better.
That's as far as it will go.
It sounds good.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we can't turn down.
Okay, then can you turn this around and I can speak into yours? Okay, so let's.
Having on the insurance policy.
I hear you now.
Okay, 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 I'm going back to the beginning. The Sullivan-Sorento Historical Society also meets on the third Wednesday of the month. Sam Younger is making a interesting presentation tonight. Um, so there has been talk, people are suggesting a change of the day of the third Wednesday meeting to a third Tuesday or Thursday. And also a suggestion of the start time instead of seven to be five or six.
Impossible. For, as far as the five or six goes, I'd barely make the seven. Um. I, I always hope that they would switch their time.
Different people in the community because there's a conflict, um, with the Sam Younger. Okay.
Uh, so the general consensus is from, from the audience here is, uh, to leave it the way it is, um. I certainly think seven o'clock suits my, uh, my vulnerability best, uh, at night doesn't so much matter. I don't know. It would be good if there weren't conflicts such as with the Historical Society because that is an interesting. It's true, um. But it's, uh, sounds like, sounds like a lot of pushback.
Yeah, I, I'm, um, I regret missing their meetings as well, but, uh, um, I have, we never. Um, I have, we never really, um, asked them to move their meeting. Um, but I'm, I'm not in favor of moving hours because. You know, certain, certainly can't move the time as far as the day goes, this sort of spreads it out.
Do, do you know somebody involved well enough to ask them to move their meetings or?
She, she's on here. Or she was.
Okay, uh.
If anybody in attendance knows them, we are going. In this morning, since today. Have you asked them if they're willing to move their meeting nights? That would be great. Otherwise, we'll continue on the topic.
Okay, I'm continuing. Reviewing the upcoming property and casualty policy renewal. Um, the tax commitment book shows that the town owns the property. Um, the Union Church on the East Side Road, however, it's not listed on our insurance policy. Do we know why?
Uh, it's not the town's.
Then why is it on the tax, the tax command book as property owned by the town?
Um.
And it's tax, it's, yeah, it's listed, it's listed as.
It's a tax attempt.
But it's listed as town property.
Uh, well, it'd be great to find a deed for it. It was, uh. Uh, as far as I know, it was.
Just right there, town of Sorento.
Uh, hey, Rob, so I'm looking at the, uh. There is, it does appear to be owned by the town.
What are you looking at?
Uh, there's a building record, property card. And then I'm also looking at the audit of billing amounts, um. And it shows.
That's, um. Mark Gibson, uh, uh. Documented and so forth, but, um, I haven't heard anyone who can say it's actually the town's.
Yeah, who can say that it's not?
Uh, I mean, the Parkers could, should possibly shed some light on that because they, uh, helped maintain it. But it's not the town's.
Yeah, I mean, so. The way it, way it looks to me right here, um, it shows that it's town owned. Uh.
That's just the, the, uh, the tax record.
Until somebody slips and falls on the front steps. Uh, so my issue here is the liability. If, if it shows that it's town owned on paper. Uh. We should have it insured or listed on our insurance policy.
Okay, let me, let me contact, uh, Heather Mike and see if they have an idea on that because. Um, everything I've heard is not the town's. It's a, uh, it's a community church that was built with non-town money.
Have you, have you researched the deed? I mean, seems like.
Uh, the, the last time this came up at a selectman's meeting. Various people tried, but let me, me contact, uh, Heather. Uh, about it.
There seems to be a lot of discrepancies around town property. Yeah, hang on, we got a, got a question from the audience.
I think the thing is, I think Sturgis told me this years ago. The town owned the land. The community that wanted to serve both groups. And it was never quite solved from that point.
So it sounds to me, uh, so Terry Noes, uh, just spoke up. And heard from Sturgis Haskins that the town, he thinks the town owns the land. And the community or members of the community built the church. Um, and if that's the case, I, no question, we need to have a liability policy. Um, and some sort of contract for usage. Uh, or sell the property outright, um. I mean, that's, that's a liability nightmare.
Okay, again, let me speak to Heather. Um.
So table till, uh, we have some further information?
Right, so, so perhaps the town would be, um, gifting the land. Um, to, um. To the owners of the building, which is not the town. It's the community, but it's not the town. It's a really strange situation. Because, um, we, we can't, you know, we can't, uh, start, uh. Having rules for something that it's not ours, so the land is ours, that makes sense.
So then that, that becomes a particular issue, and before you enter in a conversation with the potential owners about that. I don't think the town should be gifting a property to anything other than a nonprofit. And that is not an active church with active services and probably is not a nonprofit. So we need to really consider. The, the whole picture here before.
Sure, agree.
Before you speak out of turn on that.
Well, I'm not gonna be offering any, anything, um, as far as, uh, conclusion. I'm just gonna get information and, and see, uh. You know, get enough information to understand the whole situation and where we can go with it.
I'd be interested if the, to see if the Parkers have a deed for the land. I mean, if, if they, if they think they have ownership of it. Um, there's no question they should have a deed.
Yeah, they wouldn't, they don't have ownership of it, um, but they're, they've taken, uh, responsibility for maintaining it.
Yep, um.
Yeah, so we need more information, I agree. Um, anything else, Kathy?
Okay. There is a need for a budget committee, the warrant and a budget are two different things. The warrant workshop is not a budget. As treasurer, I have had no say in the budget and it appears as though two other selectmen have not either. Um, so budget committee chief goals will be to create internal controls, complete transparency and accountability. Put the spending of the money in the hands of the people. Um, the people need to understand the typical budget involves a budget committee, the involvement of the town treasurer working cooperatively with all the selectmen. Before it goes to the town vote. Currently, that's not the practice. Um, the town needs to be proactive instead of reactive. Prepare for capital expenditures, expenditures like the community building boiler. Exterior repairs and painting of the community they are building and the municipal sewer. Um, and the budget should be started now, so it's not rushed, town residents input is encouraged through forming a budget committee. Um, there is a budget class on the twenty eighth of February, uh, of April twenty eighth via Zoom, and I will be taking that. And I afforded the material to the other select people in case they are interested as well. Good. Um, Wadman. I sent him an email requesting a meeting. I needed to organize things, um, everything was in such a state of chaos. I was trying to get a handle on what issues are there, um. So I, I contacted him to get a quote on what it will cost to fix all the accounting errors and to get help with journal entries. For the appropriations that haven't been made in the last eight years. And then, um. Advice on cash flow planning because we seem to be running out of money before, by the end of the fiscal year. And so speaking of cash flow, is it legal for the, for the fire department to continually go over the twenty five percent budget allowed? In the warrant without consequences? They're over their budget now. Um, and I, another question for Wadman is we have real estate taxes on. The books that go way back to twenty, uh, two thousand and. Two thousand and five, two thousand and six, so how do we collect those? I have printed out issues, checkbook issues that I was gonna give to the select people and I need to help on how to handle that. Um. So, and I'm also trying to find out what year we did not have this problem because the problem existed in twenty eighteen when Esther was a treasurer. Twenty nineteen when David was a treasurer and then twenty twenty when Rob was filling in, um. So if there's no budget, if there's no budget, money in the budget for. These accounting fees, then I propose a special town meeting, be held.
You're, you're, you're running through a list. Um. But it's. So you're, you're, um, one of your items of many, um, a- as far as the budget committee goes. Um, I think it'd be great if other people were interested, uh, in the past, no one was interested, um. Uh, but if you have people that are interested, fine. A- as far as the budget goes, um. There are, you need to have, um, um, ending balance before you can actually. Uh, know how much money you need to appropriate in the following year, and that's why it's done near the end of the year. Okay, the ending balances, um, uh. The end of, uh, uh, June, or July first. Um, twenty twenty is what we have to go from. Uh, except for the few exceptions that you found that, uh, you'll be working with. Uh, Wadman to, to, uh, work with and adjust.
Because I've gone back and through the town books and the town warrant, yeah, the annual reports. And a lot of the.
I can't hear you again.
I've been going through the, the, the town annual reports and the ending balances on many years don't match the getting balance for the next year. So the.
That's because they get adjusted with the, the help of the auditor. So, uh, who do you have for, um, volunteers for, uh, a budget committee?
We have Susan Clancy Doherty, we have Ann Wymer, we have Jared Neal. And, uh.
Uh, uh, I, I didn't get that, say again, please?
Gerald Neal, Mel. Anne Wymer. Um, Susan Clancy Doherty. And I can't think of who else was contacted.
Um, I'm not sure who's speaking, but I can't hear it. So, um, I'm not sure how effective a budget committee can be without knowing the starting balance. And.
How, how would?
Our, uh.
This is Susan Clancy Doherty, can you hear me now?
Yep.
I'm very confident that I can work with Kathy and the auditor, and we do need to go back. Absolutely, under no circumstances can you look at twenty twenty, anybody that has any financial background will tell you that. And there are serious problems and the people need to know it. So I'm sure that I can find plenty of people that will help and that are interested in this. And I, you know, give me a chance and I will prove you that it's true. And I have forty years of experience in the financial industry.
So on this, on this topic, I actually was contacted by email.
I can't hear you, John.
I was actually contacted by email, uh, this week. Some member of the community was concerned enough about. Uh, the questions recently about, um. Town accounts and, uh, they, they think it might be wise to have a forensic audit done. Um. And I mean, the more we discuss the issues of the past. And, um. And problems that seem, seem pretty apparent in the budget. Um, I would be inclined to, to support a forensic audit.
Okay, we need to give, uh, the, uh, I spoke to Wadman about the audit. And they have no time to do anything with it until, uh, the third week in April. Uh, we need to be prepared to, uh. Uh, give them everything, including the questions.
So, I, I got, hang on, let me, help me understand. So you asked, you asked Kathy to reach out to Wadman at the last selectman's meeting? And so they haven't contacted, yeah, they haven't contacted her. But you, but, but you've spoken with them?
This is, this was a while ago when I, I asked, uh, Kathy about, uh, Trio.
Yeah, but just at the last meeting, um, you asked her to reach out to Wadman for help. So you, have you spoken to Wadman?
I didn't ask her for help, um, that was earlier.
Maybe I misread the minutes.
But, you know, we need, um, we need to be prepared to, um, push the, the, uh. Uh, the audit through, um, and, and let them have an opportunity to answer the questions that Kathy has. This is not, um. You, this is definitely getting, um, overblown, more than necessary. And I don't, uh, I don't agree with the directions going.
Okay, okay, go ahead. As treasurer of the town, shouldn't I be contacted or involved in any discussion with the auditor?
Your responsibility is to, um, keep track of money coming in, the money going out. It's the selectman's responsibility for beyond that.
Um, well, would you like to see the job description from MMA for this town treasurer? I think you need to read it.
And, and then you read the, the, uh, description of the selectman and the selectman ultimately responsible for, for, uh. For budgeting and, and accounts and so forth.
Yeah, let me, yeah, let, let me speak to that, it, it, it does appear that the, uh, that the treasurer. Is just overseen by the board of selectmen. The board of selectmen aren't really doing the work as the treasurer. The treasurer does the work of the treasurer. And if you do read the job description, um. MMA does state that the, that the town treasurer is not the job of the selectman. And that's, yeah, there's internal controls like that for a reason. Um, so I guess. I, I guess I, help me understand why you, uh, or wh- where you're coming from thinking that maybe that's not Kathy's job.
The selectmen oversee the treasurer, um, and we don't handle the money, but we're ultimately responsible for the accounts.
And I guess, I guess we're ultimately, we're ultimately responsible to answer concerns of the treasurer too, right? I mean.
Sure.
She, she's, she's coming to us with concerns about the, about the town accounts and budgets, um.
Right, and that's where we have to work with the auditor.
So, yeah, well, I mean, I guess we don't have to work with the auditor, we want her to work with the auditor, right? We just want, we, we wanna have.
No, um, I've been working with the auditor for the last twenty something years with the treasurer.
So is that where the problem is? Is that you don't want? Anyone to find out what has happened in the past because that's really what it's sounding like?
No, it's not, it, it's just a matter of, um. There, there's history there as far as, um, um, accounts, um.
And making up numbers?
No, not making up numbers.
You, you just said that.
I'm, I'm just saying.
The fiscal year ends and then you make up new numbers for the next year.
Not that I make, I adjust them based upon the auditor.
So where's the track of the numbers?
It's with the audit.
So that's why we need a forensic audit?
I think that if. Yeah, I would think we need a ser- a forensic audit, definitely, because if we've been working with an auditor for the past twenty years and it's this messed up. Then obviously something is wrong.
Not that messed up, I don't understand that. I can't hear you.
And the sewer owes the town people the money and they owe in ten years twenty nine thousand dollars. And there's over thirty thousand dollars in bills in the rear because you didn't pay for it. You didn't have a bill. We're talking a hundred thousand dollars. I think that's a problem.
Kathy's been, uh, I don't know where Kathy is with this, the sewer uh, user fees, but I thought you were caught up.
Caught up. Explain to me how come they were behind behind for three years, Rob? I am caught up, I'm caught up twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty when I started my job in January of twenty twenty one. So I did catch up.
Right. So
Rob, this is why you should be at the meeting so you can hear what people are saying.
I agree.
Instead of being at your house, you are our, you are our leader of the town and you should be at meetings.
But I need, need a um
No, you need to be at the meetings.
Right, I'm just saying that I need to have a a computer that I can use as opposed to the the house that's going on right now.
Rob, you can use a computer here and we have a monitor here that shows the agenda and that's really all we need to share. We need one computer that's hooked up to to share things on Zoom.
Let's get a better sen- sound system.
Do, do we want to take a brief uh, break and let you join us here tonight or?
Well, this is at the, at this point. So I'm not sure what um you know, a further audit uh, entails. Do you know Kathy?
What did you say?
So, and a a more in-depth uh, forensic audit, do you know what that means for in this case?
Well, I would assume that they would go through every item um, bit by bit.
Well, that uh, assumption.
Because there are issues, there are issues with the checking account. Um, there are items on there that haven't been cleared since twenty seventeen. David has um, left his thumbprint in in QuickBooks. As it is now, I'm not able to put any id- any financial data into Trio until
Um, so the issues of the items uh, in the past, have you documented that?
How do you mean documented that?
Listened to them to send them to the auditor.
Um, I sent an email to the auditor the uh, recently and I had no response.
But what what was in that email?
My concerns with uh, the with the
No, not not general, but very specific uh, details.
The town has purchased Trio municipal software. I am using it on a daily basis to process transactions. However, I have not entered any financial balance.
Kathy, I know that.
Data in it. Will you ask me? I'm reading.
No, no, oh, you you're reading the email to to Wadman. No, what I'm saying is you need to put together um, a detailed list of your concerns uh, from the past that are older than uh uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
It's easy, it's easier to be I'll do it as of uh, June, January fourth, twenty twenty one, when I entered the the doors. Because I have, I'm not responsible for anything beyond that.
No, I'm saying we need, I I know you're not responsible, that's fine. Um, but we need to resolve the issues that are are old as you're listing. It's not i- i- it's not demanding a a forensic audit as much as there are specific things that need to be addressed.
Why can't we have a forensic audit? You obviously have huge issues with what Kathy's been doing.
The huge issue was spending more money on a a uh, an audit when we have an audit that have, has a few issues.
Uh, it seems like it has a lot of huge issues and you're trying to cover it up.
Yeah, sure. Um, so Ted Prius uh, has had his hand up.
Well, this is uh, Ted's other half, Daphne. Hi, hi, guys. Um, you know, personally do a lot with audit over, over a lot of years. Forensic usually is a term that you use when you have no records or limited records. Ordinary audit is when you have records. It's also very common for auditors to make adjustments at the end of the year. Just trying to clear up some of the misstatements I've been hearing. Um, and auditors sample and look for deviance in material respects. So it's never the case that everything is down to the penny as a result of an audit. And Kathy, I don't know the magnitude of the discrepancies you've noticed, but the question for an auditor would be, are they material? And do they materially change the auditor's view of the state of the records? And so, you know, I think um, we're kind of using the word forensic in a CSI way. And that's not the way that auditors consider forensic. It would be, you know, if you had a fire, if you had a massive loss of records and things had to be reconstructed by going to vendors and getting original records, that that's when auditors use the word forensic.
Wouldn't uh
Actually, no, that's that is not what I have read. If you
Well, and I I I'm in the middle of audit. I'm functioning as a CFO for a number of businesses, um, large, large
Forensic audit also just include an uh, an auditor that has not been involved taking a look at uh
Now, if you, well, if you have a question as to whether your auditor has met their compliance standards, um, that is a very serious you know, concern. And um, I think you would really only raise that if you, if you really felt there was some malfeasance.
What what if it was a question of whether they were just not provided the correct information?
Yeah, so that that is, that is the jo- the job of the auditor is to look for fraud um, as well, you know, and management is required to make statements as to whether they are aware of fraud. Um, so that's, that's all a part of the process as well. Uh, but part of what auditors are really trained to do is go to original records and they do that by sampling. And then if there's deviance in the samples, they sample more and they sample more. And they have hard numeric standards to determine whether the sampling was adequate. So um, I don't know who your audit firm is, but they take it very, very seriously. I'll I'll stop here. You know, I I think things are getting just a little bit maybe over the top with accusations and I would be pretty careful because auditors are very professional and, you know, they're licensed, they're regulated. And just because you see a discrepancy here or there doesn't mean the auditor didn't do a good job or somebody All right, I'll stop.
All right, thanks.
I I think you, you're misunderstanding my, um, where I'm coming to Kathy to walk into this situation and have to put stuff into Trio when she has no faith in the figures that are there. There are not matching figures anywhere. None of the annual reports from year to year match. And so I think that's the part for me that seems important.
She has to go back to the audit um and go from there. That's why it's very important to get the audit complete. And that
But there are, there are many things there are many things that um, you have said in, even in the meetings, that that the uh, money was not dispersed to the accounts that it was supposed to be. So the auditors let that happen. They let that go for all these years, but on none of those dispersments were met.
The the class
So what does that mean?
Uh, yeah, I'll I'll do one more, Rob, and then I'll shut up. I'm sorry. Classification to accounts is typically not a matter for audit. That's a management issue.
Unless there's a reason why. If there's money that is not there, we just want to figure out where the money is. Where is the money that is supposed to be in these accounts?
Generally, a budget is fungible across accounts and it's left to management to determine priorities for spend. So that's not an auditor issue. And also bookkeeping in general into classifications is not an auditor issue. Um, I'll I'll stop here. Rob's got this well in hand, I think, folks. Um, so I'll just
So Darla liked to speak as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, uh, my background as a CPA, I mostly worked on the tax side, not the audit side, but I do have had some experience on the audit side. And the um, information that Daphne has provided is absolutely my understanding as well. Auditors do not go in and look at every single number in an accounting. They, again, they do a sampling, they look for um, you know, by sampling, hopefully they find discrepancies. But I mean, obviously, you know, things, things are are able to be like not found by an audit. But but again, they they, they have the ability to look at things in a holistic way. They're not looking at every single expense. Um, and I would agree that it it, you know, this whole, like, everyone jumping on board with this forensic audit, it's, I mean, I think people are using that without really understanding the term um, and and what they're really asking for. I mean, were the expense, if you really wanted someone to go back all those years and look at every one of those numbers in the accounts, um, you're talking a pretty big number. So um, uh, I mean, I I I don't feel alarmed at the things. I mean, I I certainly um don't have a lot of information. I hear just what's going on in the meeting, but um I mean, I I can't see hiring somebody to go back and look at, you know, all those years and every single number. It doesn't make any sense.
So, yeah. Thank you very much for your input. You know, we're, we've asked somebody to do the job of town treasurer and she has found discrepancies where she feels are questionable.
And her job is to communicate those detailed questions with the auditor.
Hang on, hang on, just to, you just come up so that everybody can hear.
So I have the Sorento annual report twenty one to twenty twenty two, and it's easy to look at the fire truck account. The ending balance for June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, you have a figure of a hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and ninety nine dollars. So that money should have been taken in every year. They take fifteen thousand dollars and they put it into the fire truck fund. Kathy, can you look at your records and tell me how much Matthias Savings Bank says we have in the the uh, account?
Okay, that that's the function
Excuse me, can you just be quiet? No, she, I've asked her to to look at something. So can you just, can you have that available?
Kathy mentioned that the
But she's trying to look at something. Can you just be quiet, please?
She's looking.
Okay, all right, she's got an answer for us. So there's a hundred and seventeen thousand. You let people believe that there's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in the account. But if you look at the Matthias Bank, there's twenty four thousand dollars. Appropriations haven't been made for eight years. At fifteen thousand dollars a year, that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We won't have enough money. That appropriations haven't been made for eight years and we don't have enough money.
What accounts that?
And last week, the last meeting, you said, oh, take the twenty three hundred dollars out of the EMS account. Well, it was there and then it was gone.
Okay.
So that's
Kathy, I am going to take next Tuesday off and we're going to work on um, the things that that need to be adjusted and and brought to the auditor. I can't hear. Okay, enough of this. Next Tuesday, I'm taking off and I'm going to work with you to come up with the questions for the auditor.
I would like to know where the two hundred and seventy five thousand
No, we're not going to answer that now, Susan. Stop.
Put it on your list. Two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in the sewer account and it doesn't exist. There's a hundred thousand dollars in that
Okay.
That's my question.
So
Okay, um
Did, Rob, did you make a note of those questions? Because those sound like pretty big discrepancies.
No, I'm going to work with uh, Kathy and um, make a note then.
Okay.
Is that, we have, where the, what the balances that are in the um, annual report are just an attempt to go from uh, the last audit with what I'm given from the treasurer uh, through the years.
And if they're off by hundreds of thousands of dollars, isn't that a misrepresentation of accounts?
Let's just work on it without talking about generalizations.
John?
Yeah.
Can you be at that meeting with them, being the second selectman?
Um
That makes a public meeting.
Yeah, technically we can't. So the time for us to discuss it is in a public forum such as this.
We can bring it to a a meet, public meeting um uh, as a result later.
Yeah, um, yeah, we're not even allowed to to have phone calls outside of a public forum or emails back and forth. Any collaboration, especially in regards to the budget, has to be done in a, in a public forum. Uh, it's different for Rob to work one-on-one with Kathy, but for any other selectman to be involved, it would have to be a public meeting.
Okay.
And and just for the record, I'm supportive of Rob uh working with Kathy initially to to identify the questions and concerns more specifically. Hang on.
What I want to know is why am I the first one to bring up these questions and concerns? Because they have been, uh, they have been out there for years.
Well, you and um, these are things that we were supposed to be working on earlier as far as the the transfers. But unfortunately, you came in with without um, um, an audit being recent. And so we have to catch up in order to get things going.
When I came in, there was eight years' worth of appropriations that have not been made and an audit hasn't been done in three years. But to get these appropriations caught up, I don't believe there's enough money in the account to do that.
Well, let's look at the details of it and work with the auditor. Uh, that's the only way we can get things resolved.
So, Rob, have you known that this money isn't in the account? If it's been over eight years?
Um, I need to talk details. Um, I I'm not going to talk generalizations about this.
So that makes it sound even worse that you do know.
There, there were um uh, you know, we have to work back to the audit. And the audit's two years old, so we have to um
The problem goes back over eight years.
And those details, I'm going to work with you to document so we can work on them.
So it sounds like you have known for, for years that that money hasn't been in there.
No, that's not the case.
Well, that's what it makes
Know for years is that um uh, my attempt to uh, uh, work with the balances have always been uh, subject to adjustments because our audit is behind. Um, and as far as uh, appropriations getting transferred, um, that's something we have to work on and and get them up to date. That's not something I've done. Uh, that's the the treasures responsibility. So let's
I have one more item.
Okay.
I have twenty two thousand, four hundred and fifty six dollars um overdue from sewer balances. Um, and I would, I'd like to have permission to put liens on those properties.
Um, which properties?
I have a whole list of them. I have uh, twenty nine Main Street. They owe over four thousand I have, uh, twenty-nine Main Street. They owe over four thousand dollars. Nine Preble Street owes over nine, uh, four thousand dollars. Uh, Eight Short Lane overs, uh, is over three thousand dollars. Fifty-two Wa Kegav is over three thousand dollars. Um. When someone sold their house at sixty-six Wa Keg, um, they owed seventeen hundred dollars and they don't own this property anymore, but they still owe it.
Right.
But we start Kathy to put liens on.
I can't hear you.
I need a motion that we have Kathy put liens on the properties that are in the rear for the sewer.
Um, before I do that, um, yeah. Um, I'm just thinking, uh, have you checked to make sure that legally we can't put liens on them? Cause it, it's not property taxes, it's sewer fees. Um, so, um, I, I second that motion, providing that you, uh, you confirm that we legally can put liens on them.
Okay. All those in favor?
Will Penn, I.
All those.
There you go. That your last item, Kathy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I got, I got a couple of things that, uh, that are unfinished business. Um. One of which will have to be tabled for, uh, for a coming meeting because Joey's not in attendance. Uh, but that item is the Sullivan Fire Chief operating one of Sorento's trucks on a mutual aid call. Uh, Joey was to report back with the information about that. He is not. Um. Also looking for further information from the recent, uh, review by the Bureau of Labor of the Fire Department and.
It would take, um, uh, I don't know if Kathy, you remember how many weeks it'll take for the report?
I got my report. So he shouldn't have this report.
Okay.
Um, and then also, uh, going back to February, uh, we talked at a meeting about making sure the fire trucks were properly insured and for the proper value. Uh, we never did get any further on that. Kathy, do you know if all of the fire department vehicles are insured? Including the boat? Do we know if the boat's insured? Not agreed value, but just cash value. Okay. Well, at least they're covered for insurance. That's, that's really important. Um. And going back to near the beginning of the year, um, Rob, uh, you had asked, uh, Dan Pelagi and Wadman for help separating the, uh, Fire Department Auxiliary from the Fire Department. Have we had any progress on that or any advice on how to move forward with that issue?
So basically, um, I. They, um, the auxiliary has to establish, um, hold on a second. Auxiliary has to establish as a nonprofit, but I'm not sure if it's totally necessary. What does Sullivan and other, uh, towns do?
Uh.
Most of them.
Have they established as a nonprofit? Most of them don't have a separate auxiliary. Um. A lot of times it's, uh, it's a, a separate fund for, uh, events like Sullivan has the, the, um, Sullivan Days Fund. Um, so they have, instead of an auxiliary.
Uh, that's the event that they fund as well as an auxiliary.
Um, so I have no exclusive experience with, uh, with Fire Department Auxiliaries being separate. And I mean, you know, you look at, you look at our, uh, our Fire Department is a municipal fire department. Um. So really there's no way that we can support a auxiliary. Um, or I don't see how that's specifically laid out, uh.
Yeah. So one thing I'm concerned about is the expense of establishing the auxiliary as a, uh, five oh one C or, or whatever it is.
Um, it's, that's not, that's not the town's expense to bear. That's the point.
Right. Um, but, um. So I was hoping that there's some other town in the area that, that actually did separate them as, you know, we want to.
Were you able to get any guidance from, from Pelagi or Wadman about that? I mean, they.
Um.
Must have dealt with it at some point or another.
Yeah, I'll. It, it wasn't very helpful. Um. Um. I don't have my hand on it, but I, I can, uh, bring it up next time.
I think at this point we should, uh, we should have, I guess it's going to have to wait until there's money in the budget, but we should have Joey reach out to the main municipal for guidance. Um. Because ultimately it's, you know, the, the auxiliary is not, uh, is not the town's financial responsibility.
Right. Um, but to, to properly establish them, so it's, it's, uh, a nonprofit.
It's not, not the town's responsibility, not your responsibility, not my responsibility, not Diana's responsibility. That's a separate entity from the municipal fire department.
Right. That's true.
So I guess, I guess we'll have to table this and, uh, at the next meeting, that Joey's in attendance, we'll have him, have him deal with that issue.
Okay, um, the executive session will have to wait till next time. Um, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Michael, I.
Will Penn, I. Good night, everyone.
Good night.